Are we, are we? With apologies for being late, we reconvene for the regular meeting of the La Habra Heights City Council September 9th. We've come out of closed session.
Yeah, and we discussed a fair bit, that's why we're late, but we have no reportable action, so that is all.
Thank you. Oh, I guess I was supposed to call roll call again, right? Mr. Bergman?
Present.
Mr. Larity?
Here.
Mr. Zizula?
Here.
Mr. Bispisa?
Here.
And Engelhardt is here. Norm, would you like to lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, are we doing the presentation at this point, or?
Yes, we will start off with a-
But first, I wanted to say, I'm sorry we were late, and I'm glad everybody's surviving the heat. I'm sorry, go ahead, thank you.
The first one up tonight is a proclamation for National Preparedness Month. September is our national preparedness month, and it is a very, very important topic all the way around, and our Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee do great work in that, and so we do have a proclamation that we will be presenting. We have Mr. Kwan Lee, who is Chair of the Emergency Safety and Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee, so it's time I'd like to invite Mr. Chair Kwan up, and we will present the proclamation to him. So, as, as we were talking about earlier today, September is National Emergency Preparedness Month, and our Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Committee does great works and great strides in trying to make La Habra Heights a safe community, and get that information out to the public the best they can, and so we have been done a lot of things, they went through the process, we've been designated a firewise community, we've held a lot of great workshops with the community and great attendance from residents for those workshops, and also, we're looking at moving to the next phase of that, and breaking, the city's been broken into zones, and we're looking for zone leaders and some of those other things, so I will hand it off to you, Kwan, if you want to say a word or two, and-
Yeah, I think, as we began this process to get the city prepared, you know, we all need to come together and be the solution, because if we wait, you know, it's not going to work for us, but if we're proactive, and some of the questions came up, how do we put the rut size of screens up, and, you know, prepare your home for embers, for mentoring your eaves, or whatever it may be, so, you know, there's a lot of information out there, the magazine has a lot of great articles, we have a great team of the members of the EPC that are working, so if you're willing to lend a hand, you know, volunteer, we need zone leaders to disseminate information and check in on one another, because, you know, if something should happen, at least we have folks that can get out and do some outreach to make sure that everybody's taken care of, especially our LD and those that are less mobile, so, thank you.
Well, just congratulations, and thank you for all the work you do.
Thank the Chair. We do have one more presentation tonight, grab the certificate. So, this is in recognition of one of our residents, Drew Katonic, he has, come on up Drew. Hey Drew. So Drew, we just wanted to thank you for all the hard work you do. Drew has been a great source of information and outreach to the community related to trash, and Republic Services, and all the work that we've done with Republic over the year. Drew has been a great resident who works with Republic and staff, we talk to him almost every day, we have a conversation Drew, but he does tirelessly out there looking out for the residents, and trying to make sure that we can, when there's issues or things that are going on, he'll communicate that not only to us, but also to Republic Services, so as we move through this transition, and hopefully here in a minute or two, we'll see a new, a new contract going out to Ware Disposal, Drew will continue to help with them, we've already let Ware know that you'll be talking with them quite a bit, and they're looking forward to it Drew, but Angie and I wanted to thank you for all, all that you do for us, and for the residents, and for the trash services, I'm sure you will work just as tirelessly with Ware as you did with Republic, and you are just been a great resource, and we just wanted to thank you for all of your time and effort that you put out for our residents here in La Habra Heights.
Speaking of trash services, we're going to, because it's such an important issue, and many people have expressed interest, we're going to move item 17 next, and we'll turn it over to the city attorney?
Yes.
City manager, the new city manager.
We'll turn it over to Special Counsel Patrick Munoz, who will kind of give you some of the topics in the, in the discussion related to the process that we've been going through, from our transition to Ware Disposal, and all the deal points and the things that are contained in the agreement with them, that is before you tonight, so I'll hand it over to Mr. Munoz.
Thank you very much. Good morning, or good morning, excuse me, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. This is a follow-up to the issue that we addressed on August 12th. At that time, you'll recall, after going through a RFP process and considering proposals, the council subcommittee negotiated and talked through with several haulers, and ultimately came to a recommendation for Ware Disposal to be your new solid waste provider. Tonight's action is requesting a resolution to approve a franchise agreement with Ware Disposal. That's the, pardon me, the formal contract that outlines all of the services that they'll be providing. The, kind of the core issues, in terms of the level of service that the city receives in many ways, are unchanged, but there are some important new issues that I want to discuss this evening, that the public should be aware of, and that the council should understand as part of looking at this franchise agreement. And my apologies, there was a couple of discrepancies in the staff report compared to the final agreement. The first is the term, the agreement is effectively 10 years with two one-year extensions, but instead of ending at the beginning of October in 2034, I wrote it to end at the end of June or the beginning of July, and the reason for that is so that when the annual rate increases occur every year, which occur on July 1st, that if for some reason there was a transition to a new hauler, that residents wouldn't be faced with two different rate adjustments in the same year, so by making sure that the contract ends at the same time as the annual adjustments occur, there would only be, you know, one impact on rates theoretically at that time. The second issue was just an error with outdated data, and it was the rates that were included in the staff report. The, the rate that most people will be receiving for their monthly sort of standard service is $32.98, the staff reported misquoted what that dollar amount was. In terms of the overall services that people will see, and the differences that they will see, perhaps the biggest change that the city will see is that what has been called borough service will no longer exist. And borough service is something that was occurring at difficult-to-serve streets, where the street might be narrow, might have overhanging branches or phone wires, or might end in a dead end, and it was difficult for a standard-sized trash truck to service it. So going forward, Ware will be using specialized vehicles that are small enough and agile enough that they can get up and down all of those streets, so people who are currently paying borough service will no longer be paying that extra charge, so very many people are going to see a significant decrease in their monthly trash rate. There's some new terminology that's in the agreement, reflects services that were already occurring, but just to try and keep it from being confusing, we've put different labels on it. The first one is what we call residential scout service in the agreement, and residential scout service, there was some confusion in the past, it was sort of similar to borough service, and that's maybe where the confusion was. There are certain properties that can't put their trash cans out on the street, if you're able to put your trash can out on the street, doesn't matter what the street size is, Ware will pick that up for the $32 and change price, but if you live up a really steep hill or driveway, and your trash cans are collected at the top of that, on, basically on your private property in a difficult-to-reach location, sometimes specialized trucks are required to go pick those trash cans up, bring them down to the street to dump them out, and then take them back up. That causes, you know, extra costs and time, and so there is an extra charge for that, and that's referred to in the agreement as residential scout service. So people who were receiving that previously will continue to see that. There is an additional service called valet service. Valet service is available to anybody who wants it, and it's a service where, it's kind of interesting, it's something that's very common out in desert communities, for instance, where people have vacation homes, they're not there to take the trash cans from behind their gate out to the street, so Ware will go to your, behind your gate, get your trash cans, bring them out to the street, to the area where they're going to be disposed of, there's an extra charge for that, with the exception that if you are a qualified senior or disabled person, then that service is free. There is something written into the contract that ties some of these issues together, which is a requirement for a 90-day review, so there's an initial 90-day transition period, which I'm going to talk about in a moment, but when that period's over, Ware's going to go out and assess all of the customer accounts, and, and take into account where there will be opportunities for residents to save money on their trash, and where there will be opportunities to reduce waste, which is an important issue for the city, to increase your diversion numbers in order to comply with some pretty strict state laws that are out there. So during the 90th day to the 180th day following October 1st, Ware will go out and do this assessment, it'll make recommendations to residents, and one of the things that will happen, which ties into the residential scout service, is they're going to look at places where there's a common area, relatively common, not like exactly the same spot, but where you go up that steep driveway, if there's, for instance, a flat area up there, and maybe there's three homes built on that plateau, they're going to identify those areas, and if they only have to go up the hill once, then they'll only charge the same amount, and they'll split that charge amongst the three different homes that are up there, in order to, you know, have some additional cost savings for residents. And they'll also look and figure out if there's ways that people might be able to mulch on their own properties, something called grass cycling is kind of a new topic that you hear out in the waste industry, they'll be looking at ways that people could, you know, save on disposal by recycling their grass, and, and a bunch of other innovative ideas that they have in mind, with a goal of really reducing the overall tonnage that's produced by the city, which both helps your state mandated diversion requirements, and at the end of the day, from a, you know, pragmatic standpoint, it saves people money. One of the most significant things, I think, that's in the new agreement that Ware proposed, is what we're calling an annual curbside community cleanup day. So you're familiar with your quarterly cleanup days, where a couple of big roll-off dumpsters are put out in the park or the city parking lot, and people can come and bring whatever they, you know, trash they want to have thrown away there. What Ware is proposing to do is drive around the city, and let people just put stuff out curbside, and on, you know, once a year annually, they'll drive around the city and pick everything up curbside. They're going to continue to do the, the community cleanup events, if you have, although they'll well be having two of those going forward instead of four, the idea is that they're hoping that the success of the annual event will be so significant that maybe over time you don't even need the quarterly ones, but that remains to be seen. They're also adding in a e-waste collection event once a year, e-waste can also be collected during this curbside annual cleanup day, so hopefully that'll be a very efficient way to deal with that, and they're adding a textile collection event, where if you have used clothing, towels, sheets, those, those kinds of materials, they can be collected. They'll be continuing with the existing mulch giveaways that occur twice a year, but they'll be increasing that to four times a year. As I mentioned a moment ago, they're going to have new, smaller trucks that they'll be using to service much of the city, they've got some pretty neat, innovative electric vehicles, electric-powered vehicles that they'll be putting into service, to help especially service some of these hard-to-reach areas. You might not see that until after the transition period's over, just to make sure that the transition gets implemented, those trucks can't go quite as long as, you know, diesel-powered trucks, gas-powered trucks, so they might save those until they get all the heavy lifting done, and then just use them in the regular service down the road. They've added a new sharps collection program. Sharps are needles that people use, if, you know, people that have medication that require sharps. There are specialized containers that they will provide, they have two types of containers that they're, that they'll offer twice a year. One is a smaller container, but it's got a prepaid mailing label on it, residents can request that, and then when it's full, they can mail it in, or alternatively, you can receive a larger container, and when it's full, Ware will arrange to come and pick it up and take it away for you, so some different options on that, to just try and keep that material out of the waste stream. It's interesting, those, those needles poke the people that work in the recycling facilities, and it's a serious health hazard, so it's a real interest on their part to make sure that we keep that stuff out of the waste stream. Ware will continue with the Christmas tree collection that already occurs, there'll be a biannual newsletter going on, the on-call bulky item service will remain with two free collections a year for residents, you know, the hope is that that may over time not be necessary if the annual curbside collection is successful, and we'll also be continuing with the, the ability to temporarily stop service for people who might go on vacation or have construction projects and that sort of thing. There's sort of a high-level goal that if Ware can use the curbside collection, the annual curbside collection event successfully enough, there may be some room there, that down the road, we may be able to eliminate some of the other things that are going on because they're unnecessary, and then that gives them the opportunity to sit down with the city manager and the city council, the subcommittee, and figure out if there's other things that you'd like to see instead of those, and, you know, the waste industry is transitioning all the time, all kinds of new things are coming up, so if they can save on, you know, some of the things that they're providing for you by, you know, making more efficient on a one-year basis, then perhaps they can offer you something else down the road, but that's written into the agreement to be sort of flexible, and we'll see how that goes. The, probably the most significant thing for the community in the next 90 days is going to be the transition. Transitions can be painful, change is painful. Ware has been told in no uncertain terms that their number-one goal is to keep residents happy, to do everything they can to try and satisfy their needs. The transition, though, is going to have a few things that people need to understand, and what transition means in this context literally is that the Republic containers that people currently use will go away, and Ware containers will be brought in in their place. Between October 1st and November 1st, all of the Republic containers will be switched out by Ware, people can just keep using the Republic containers until Ware comes and collects them, they'll empty the waste that's in those, and take the Republic containers away, and leave the Ware containers behind. The, Ware is operating from information that was provided to them by Republic, and, you know, sometimes, just in the transition of information, that's, doesn't end up always being 100% accurate, so one of the things that residents should be mindful of is that Ware's going to come out with, if they think you have three different trash cans, one for green waste, one for recycling, and one for trash right now, based on the information they have on a list provided to them, that's what they're going to bring to your house. So if it turns out that you have something different, and that you want something different, Ware's first goal is going to be to try and give you right then and there what you want, it may not be possible to do it immediately, but under no circumstances will take them longer than the end of October to try and, and, I'm sorry, by the end of October, they will have switched everything out by the end of the transition period, so by the first of the year, everything will be sorted out, so every customer has exactly the level of service they want. People who don't have the level of service they want are going to be a number-one priority for Ware to come out and make sure that they can accommodate them, but the first thing they have to accomplish is getting all of the Republic containers removed and put the Ware containers in, so there, there's going to be a little bit of a time lag potentially there, only if the information's not correct, and hopefully, that'll be a very minimal issue. The second issue that could occur that's related to that, is that Ware is sending out bills at the end of September for services that will start in October. Now, the good news is that the bills are going to be, in many cases, lower, because it'll reflect the new rates that Ware will be charging. It may turn out that there are errors, and if there are errors, Ware is committed to fixing all those errors and adjusting everybody's accounts within, certainly within 90 days, if not sooner, within the first 30 days. There will be a welcome packet going out within the next week or so, there'll be a website that Ware Disposal will have with a link on it, you know, one of those little dropdown boxes that says La Habra Heights, that people can click on to get information. Ware will have a phone number that's dedicated for La Habra Heights online soon. It's been a little bit of a scramble, they have to have all this stuff ready to go by October 1st, but until you hopefully vote to approve this shortly, they don't have a contract yet, so some of these things aren't in place yet, but they're ready to roll on this by Friday, maybe Monday, on a number of these things, they have to get the city manager's approval on any of the materials they send out, so they've got the materials ready to go, they just need to go through the formalities of having the city approve it. So that's sort of a high-level summary of what you have. You know, a couple other points I should mention, there is a law known as SB 1383, it's, it relates to organics recycling. It's a very strict law that the state of California has adopted and imposed on all cities in the state, and what it requires is that the city must mandate that everybody has a trash collection system where you, what's called source-separate three different waste streams. So you have to put all of your green waste and organic waste, your food waste in one container, all of your recyclables, like cardboard, newspapers, aluminum cans, in another container, and then your regular trash, the stuff that goes to the landfill, into a third container, and you're not supposed to commingle those materials. So there are provisions in this agreement that require everybody to have these three different types of containers, and that may be something new for a lot of people who, in the past, even though frankly it's been the law for a while, have not really been, been really handling their waste streams in accordance with it. It's something that the city faces $10,000 a day fines on if they're not in compliance with. The city does currently have a waiver from the state, so you don't have to worry about those fines, but that waiver's going to expire. This new agreement is structured to implement all the requirements of SB 1383 right away. When the transition is done, Ware's focus is going to be to make sure that the city's in compliance with all of these laws. And there's a lot of expense, by the way, that's involved in that for Ware, the state has imposed incredible reporting requirements, record-keeping requirements, Ware is going to be responsible for keeping track of all that on behalf of the city. The law goes into so much detail that literally, there's a requirement that they look inside people's trash cans on a regular basis, like a small sampling of, of customers, to see what's being thrown away, to make sure that the waste streams aren't contaminated, and they have to do audits of routes on a regular basis to see if, not only individual cans are contaminated, but if they take all the trash that was collected from a given waste stream, they have to dump it in the ground, they go through it, and they see what percentage of that waste is contaminated, and if it exceeds a certain threshold, then there's remediative actions that are required by the state to occur. So it's kind of a, of a brave new world, so to speak, when it comes to the way that we handle our waste. It is an important issue, greenhouse gases are estimated to be caused 65% by the gases coming out of landfills, so the goal is to reduce that by these recycling efforts. So that, I think, concludes my, my comments, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions by the council? I do have a, one speaker card, and then I understand Mr. Ware is here, so I'll call Steve Blagden. Sorry, I did that.
Glad you're here, Citron Road. Thanks. Looks like a good effort by staff, the council, and the city attorney's office, thanks. There's no contract agreement, the least that I've seen, hopefully this will be held over, as the contract was not available as of 6 o'clock. We couldn't see it, thus, I'm not able to make any meaningful comment. It looked like the rates came in less than we were told, that's what your resolution says, and now we're hearing that higher rates are being brought forward tonight. Then what's the story in the franchise fee, 10%? Is that a one-time fee or an ongoing fee? Annual payment of over $100,000. The report says Ware will do the paperwork and report, so what is this for? It's enough for a full-paid position. And this looks like a trash tax or fee on the residents, and is equal to two-month service payments. This should be voted on by the residents and separately itemized on the bill. Republic was forbidden from speaking about or putting the administration charge on the bill, it was hidden. You shouldn't be afraid for residents to know what they are paying, that the city is getting. Just bringing up some things, because there's no agreement to review. Hopefully, the new carts will have the similar muted colors as the existing ones. Most important, most important, the trash service charge should be per residential unit, not by lot. The state has imposed ADUs and SB9s on us, and fees now have to be per living unit, or else residents will be subsidizing those units, even though they won't benefit from the high rental income. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jay Ware?
Madam Mayor, would you like me to address a couple of those comments?
Oh, yes, particularly the fact that the agreement, the issue, in my opinion, or my question would be the fact that, about the agreement just being made available.
So, in no particular order of importance, the agreement wasn't made available, because it wasn't done until about 2 o'clock today. It was a tremendous amount of work to put this together in a very short timeframe, it was provided in accordance with the Brown Act, we certainly wish we could have had it out last week, but it just wasn't physically possible. I will tell you that the agreement terms reflect the discussion that we had at the August 12 council meeting, and even though the staff report for this meeting had the wrong rates on it, the rates that are in the agreement are the same rates that we discussed at the August 12 meeting. In terms of franchise fees and administrative fees, the proposal process involved three different companies, and all the companies knew that this was something that the city was interested in, and they put in proposals based on this. Ware's proposal is significantly less, by more than 50%, than one of the proposals, and, and, you know, significantly less than the other as well, but really big difference, and, you know, free market kind of came into play, and Ware felt as though they can absorb the franchise fee, it's not something that the residents are going to pay. I mean, it, obviously, at the end of the day, it's paid for through the trash rates, but they gave us a number that they were comfortable with, that they pay. It's not going to be on the bill, because it's something that they pay from the gross receipts that they receive, it's not something that the city's imposing on residents. In terms of individual dwelling units and ADUs, that is something that we're very keenly aware of, and the contract is written so that each dwelling unit, as we've defined that, has to be a customer, so if state-imposed ADUs pop up on properties, somewhere where you might have one house right now, one dwelling unit, you might have four under the ADU laws, and nothing you can do about it potentially, and if that were to happen, there'd be four different trash customers that would have to be paying for the service, so that they're not being subsidized by others. I think I covered all the questions, but if not, happy to-
My specific question would be, is there any legal requirement that the contract be made available more, more in advance of this hearing? more in advance of this hearing?
No, as I mentioned, we made it available in compliance with the Brown Act. And we've been working closely with the Solid Waste Subcommittee, so it's not like this is a surprise to the council in terms of what the provisions of the contract say. And again, they're the same. It's long-winded lawyer words that reflect the deal points that we talked to you about on August 12.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions or requests for more information? Now, Mr. Ware. Sorry, I kept calling you up.
So a couple of questions. Do you have folks that are active in social, the social media up here in the Heights? Because there's quite a bit of churn going on in the social media right now about the transition. So do you have someone monitoring that?
We're just obtaining all the social media sites that...
Yeah. I would, you know, make sure you're in Nextdoor. I think as a franchisee up in the city, you can get access to Nextdoor. And then I would also talk with the administrator for the La Habra Heights residents Facebook group because there's quite a bit of people commenting in there about the transition. So Drew is doing a great job of trying to hold down the fort for you. He's posting some very accurate information. But you should probably have a more formal, more formal presence also, just so you're aware of the... Especially as we go through the transition period. And then lastly, for the council members, are we going to have a phone number for you guys that we can use when people come to us with concerns, that we can get to someone in your company right away?
Absolutely, yes. We'll provide a...
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, obviously, our phone numbers are public. And so I want to make sure that if we're getting calls, we've got someone that we can reach out to right away.
Yes, we're going to have a lot of my specific phone number. I will also provide you with my number if anything we can give us something.
Perfect, thank you.
We were given the information that you will be mailing out citywide some information to the residents before October 1st?
Oh, absolutely.
Could you tell us what your communication plan is?
We're pretty good. We're almost complete with the website, just unfinished. On orders about it, we'll have, we're going to post the email address. Welcome packet will go out with all of the details of what customers can expect, what goes into carts, what to recycle, what goes into green waste are when the waste basket will be delivered to their door. And we'll discuss how to deal with citizens and this type of discounts. And now they service, we'll talk about that. A lot of other information that residents can see, but also speak about the transition that everyone will expect to see our trucks running around the city October 1st, actually servicing a couple of carts that are out in the field. We will be then changing them out through the month of October with the exact same level of carts that every customer has, but they will be ware stolen carts. And then changes will be made with alterations on their requirements. The carts, when customers see our new carts, they'll also have a flyer on it. We'll discuss recycling, we'll discuss what goes in on cart. And if we don't get another right about a cart, we'll then recall.
And so they'll be getting, the residents will be getting a package in the US mail that'll have all this information?
Yes, we'll have a website running within the next week, seven to 10 days. And then we'll also get a welcome packet mailed to them via US mail. And then they will also get a mailing, a pamphlet with their billing to come back the end of this month. And then they will also get a flyer with their carts, so they get their new carts delivered. There should be enough information, hopefully. Get that information out. And then as councilman, you're stated that there are some websites we're going to try to get all this information up onto these websites as well. So just let's see what...
Thank you. And maybe just you could give a 30-second summary. I know this has been out there, but how long your company's been in existence? Where your headquarters are, and a couple of, some other cities you serve?
Absolutely. So we are, Ware's goal has been in business since 1968. My mother and father have been, Ware's still active members of the company. They still both work there. I run, we run over 230 trucks throughout the Southern California area. We run a solid waste recycling facility located here at... Diverted from the orange and black system, over 80 tons of debris by processing material and pushing it to head dealers. This transition to the city of Lurie Harbor, we service a community for many block areas. Hopefully, here almost next door, which is St. Louis here. We also service... There's a, near Mount Baldy, they call them, similarly, they call them Trevor Oaks. It's like West Covina area of their county pockets. Somewhere in the neighborhood of five or six thousand commercial customers. And we're, we're... Be able to take on these resident and have them able to service these tenants. And our goal is to keep everyone smiling and to ensure that we provide nice level of service that the residents have.
Thank you. And I know last time, you came to the last meeting, and you brought some members of your staff. Is there anybody here you want to introduce, or...
I can reintroduce the staff, but they're actually very much involved in the D.C. operates right now with the transition. Any of us, please just stand there. He's the operator gentleman for Ware's program. He is actually in the field, and has been in the field over the last couple of weeks, learning the residents, learning something challenging, services that we're facing. He's also been helping the residents of the community. And since he's made personal connections with some of them, and he'll be fully aware of the situation. He'll probably be our contact manager if there's an issue, because he'll be off the field. He'll be a direct transition pitcher back there, real smoothly. And in terms of operating, we have Dave, Jason Rush, sitting next door. He is going to be your community leader, he's on the street, involved in the social media portion of it. Jason's been here a lot of our recording, and he's very familiar with the agreement. But at the weekend, we'll be joining with the agreement. And then they'll be, like I said, a community, a special reaction.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
No, just a comment. I just want to thank the team and Jay Ware. I thought the negotiations went very well, and you were very receptive to, you know, the needs of the community and everything. And I just look for a good transition. I know it's going to be a little bit difficult for you during this time. But, and for Mr. Blagden, we've got the agreement here. And it's 100 pages long, so I think you'll find that it's very extensive and covers virtually everything we need for the city. So thank you much.
Thank you. I guess I'll pull it back to the council. And again, I want to thank Mr. Laarity and Mr. Bergman, who worked long and hard on this. Is there any other comment or discussion? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-27, approving an exclusive franchise with Ware Disposal Incorporated for solid waste handling services in the city, and authorize the mayor to sign the franchise agreement.
Second.
Mr. Zula?
Yes.
Mr. Pispiza?
Yes.
Engelhardt, a yes? Mr. Laarity?
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Thank you all, and thanks to the Ware team. And I hope everything goes fine. Okay. Going back to our normal procedure, we'll go to public comments. I have a comment from Cristabel Garcia.
Hello. Good afternoon. I am Cristabel Garcia, and I'm a resident here of La Habra Heights. I am also running for the city councilman position. I'm speaking on Action Item 21. I believe this is a very important action item, as the gate will improve the safety of the rider and the horse. And it's for the gate that's in the park, as for the horse arena. Action 21 is the gate replacement of large and small horse arenas. It authorizes a finance manager to amend the budget to increase a count of 5,975 and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase order, per the city's purchasing policy and project updates and deadlines. The arena gates are for safety and to keep the goat, I mean, the horses, from escaping. The safety keeps the gates closed while riding in the arena, and it's a safety issue. If a horse runs loose, it will be able to get away if the gate is open. An accidental escapes, horses can escape if a handler accidentally leaves the gate open, or if a horse unties itself, or if the rider falls off the horse. That's why I believe this issue is really important, and that the gate should be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. John Dominguez?
Good evening, John Dominguez. I've got a press road. Just three quick thanks, projects that I volunteered for lately, and I just wanted to give you a quick update. First one is basically is to thank the mayor, Mayor Engelhardt, and also council members, Pispiza and Mr. Bergman, for participating in the last trash pickup that we had in July. It's coming up again, October 19th. And I know this is being recorded, and hopefully, folks will be watching this later. So letting everybody know that October 19th is the next effort to clean up Hacienda Road. And that's my first item. The next item is the EPC, last emergency preparedness committee meeting. It was rather productive. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of planning. We actually had attendance, residents attending the meeting. And I would like to propose to the city manager, and since we have the council here, to start using the evacuation zone app because we've been talking about it for two or three months, but the residents have not really used it for anything. And I think we're getting past the point that we've been talking about it, and the residents are losing interest in it. We promoted it at the music at the park. We've talked about it at the meetings. So what I wanted to propose is that the city manager hopefully can give us permission to hopefully use the emergency app to start posting where the road closures are at, where the temporary control points for traffic may be happening due to an emergency, due to pre-planned closures. Because if you do go on social media, one of the things people complain about is how many times they didn't know about a specific road closure. So if we give them another option, another app for them to quickly look at and see where the road closures today. Thank you. Yes, so if we had this app available now, for example, I am one of the editors that actually go into the Genesis emergency zone application, the app, and be able to post where those locations are, that the road closures may be, or temporary situations for the residents to start using the app. So by the time we have an emergency, they will have the app already, they'll be familiar with the app. So, you know, they'd be able to mobilize faster. In the meantime, we can start, they can start learning it now. And what it really takes is for myself and a few of staff members to start using the Genesis function that pushes out information to the public-facing website so that, so everybody can see through the app what's going on with the road closures today, tomorrow, for how long. It's got to be taken down at 3:00 PM the afternoon. Call me, I can do it from home, or you guys can do it from home, or it can be done. It's that flexible. So I'm just promoting it to be on live as soon as possible, and so we can start using it and get the residents familiarized in how to use it. There's options. If the city manager would think about maybe giving us permission to use the app and push out the information as we need to, when we need to. For example, as a resident, I'm here seven days a week. So if you need my assistance, call me, and I can put up the information, take down the information, whatever it may be. And there are other residents who are also interested and are learning how to use the Genesis system to provide the service as a volunteer. So that's my second item. My third item is that Ms., excuse me, Ms. Susan Brooks graciously provided us, EPC, I'm a volunteer for the EPC, I'm not a member, I'm a volunteer for the EPC, provided us a booth for the October 5 yard sale at the park. So at the booth, I'm going to be there representing or talking about the EPC, becoming a member, and what the EPC folks do, and what we're trying to do as members or volunteers. And also, I'm also a member of the Fire Watch. So I'll be talking about Fire Watch to anybody that's interested in knowing about Fire Watch. And also, again, promoting the Genesis app and how it's used, have people download it. So that's another one of my upcoming projects. And also, of course, I'll be talking about promoting the road cleanup. So that's, that's my status updates. Thank you.
John, before you go, do you mind listing your, the website, your email for cleanup one more time for people out there? Do you want to mind saying the email for cleanup?
What about it? Yeah. Okay, the email for cleanup, it's actually, it's called beautifyLHH@gmail.com. BeautifyLHH@gmail.com. Due to this last article that was made by the Heights Life, I have gotten a couple of people who have sent me an email asking to be part of the next cleanup crew. So it's working. And hopefully, we are also going to hopefully get another email for the EPC, speaking of emails, for the emergency preparedness committee, so we can start helping out people with how to use the app, how do you download the app, and do they need help getting emergency equipment for the next emergency, or whatever it may be. As emergency preparedness, that's what we need to do. Start helping each other and start, through the email, start asking, hey, can you help me with this? Or whatever it may be. So there's another email that's, hopefully, it's coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Blagden?
Yes, Stephen Blagden, Citron Road. John Dominguez brought to mind the signs on Hacienda. It said August, now September, expect delays. What it doesn't say is why. I was, I'm curious. I think it's the line work, but maybe those signs can't do three messages. But if it can, it'd be good for the driving public to know why there might be delays. And then secondly... And then secondly, going back to the contract, we heard that it's provided as per the Brown Act. I just checked the city website, it's not there. I looked on the table, it's not with the agenda packet. It's not on the table. So where is the public copy? I'm pretty good with contracts, but I can't read them if, I can't see them. We've already passed it, so it just would have been nice for the public to have an available copy.
And maybe we can have the city manager explain the signs, and maybe even Deputy Beltran explain the copper theft that's been happening on Hacienda and some of those issues.
We can speak that way. Mr. Dominguez had one more comment he'd like to make real quick.
Hi.
Oh, in regards to posting information as far as road closures, not only would they see the icon of the road closure, but they would see an actual explanation of why it's closed, for how long it's going to be closed. So yes, there would be an explanation as to why and how and when it's happening, for how long. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to elaborate on the closures on Hacienda, or the potential closures?
Sure, I can elaborate. So you've seen some message boards that are scattered around town. Those are work that's related to Verizon. Verizon is in the process of updating all of their wireless sites, which are located on utility poles in and around all through town. So the one that was set August originally, now says September, is for that, is the work that Verizon has been doing out there to make improvements to their, to their equipment out there to boost some of that cell signal, especially for people who have Verizon customers in, in the Heights. We could talk with them about adding one more line in there, because I was, I just talked to another resident who thought it was something else than what it was for that. But we also have had a great amount of wire theft, copper theft, specifically along Hacienda Road. There's been people that have been cutting down the frontier lines. So going up the poles, how are they getting up there? We have some ideas and some leads on that now, but actually cutting those telecommunication lines and then pulling large sections of those cables down. So you'll see Frontier has been out quite a bit all over town, making replacements of, of all that copper theft that's been out there. Been working closer with the Sheriff's Department on that. And also, some of the people in the areas where there have been several rounds of this in a couple of locations, we've been talking with some of the residents out there that they see people out there doing work at night or something that's odd, to call the sheriff's station, to call us. And we also gave them some contact information for Frontier as well so they can try to report that information out to them as directly as, and quickly as we can to hopefully curtail any more line thefts.
I wasn't clear, is there some specific activity that looks, that is relevant to copper theft? Are they out there with several people at 3:00 in the morning, or?
Yeah, it seems to be overnight hours when they're out there. We feel that they're accessing it using like a bucket truck. So a truck that you would normally see those utility workers on the pole up there working on it. So people may think that they're actually working on the lines, but they're actually in the process of cutting those lines and then pulling them down from pole to pole. So that's been happening in those overnight hours, really early in the morning, really, real early in the morning is what we've been seeing to happen.
Mr. Pespiza, is that? Okay, I don't have any other public comments, so moving on to committee comments. Whatever that, what is committee comments? Okay, city council comments, anyone? Administrative reports, city managers' report, and I guess Mr. Rafferty is, you'll see later in the program, officially going to be, or is our city manager at this point. And we welcome him aboard. He's been doing a good job, and I hope you keep it up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for that vote of confidence. We've been having a good time. We've been able to accomplish some things in a short period of time, as we saw earlier tonight. So it's been great working with everybody, and look forward to keeping that going. I'll keep it brief for city manager's item tonight. Mostly, we've been continuing with the recovery through the FEMA process from the storms in February. So today, most of the day, myself, our city engineer Gerald and Grace were out with our FEMA representatives, mitigation specialists, and their damage assessment engineers. And we were out looking at the sites where we've had damage from the storm. So we did one whole day of that. And just happened to be unfortunate, that was 103 degrees today. But we, we kind of worked through that process. And we'll be doing another complete day to go out and look at the areas where we've seen damage, where we've made some repairs, and some other areas where you need to make some further repairs and/or mitigation. So it's one of those steps in that process with FEMA. So we spent a good chunk of the, pretty much the whole day today was dedicated to being out in the field with FEMA and, and working through that process. So we will regroup again next week, and we'll have another day of inspections with all the engineers and people from FEMA and our, their mitigation specialists for that one.
Thank you. City attorneys' report?
No report.
Community development report?
The community development report is submitted for you tonight in the month of August. Building issued 15 building permits. We had three coenforcement complaints that came in. We closed four coenforcement cases. We issued seven stop works in the month of August and closed nine unpermitted construction cases. We took in seven development applications and, and planning, and then approved three projects. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer for you.
Questions? Fire chief's report?
Good evening, council. Mayor, Fire Chief's report is for you here. We had 57 calls, we're down three on average for the month of, that was August. We had some interesting 22 ALS calls, 20 BLS calls, three public assists, and seven fire calls, five TCs. I was asked to remind people that when we, they have a emergency, they're to dial 911 rather than the fire admin office during the day. I think someone had an issue, and they called the fire admin office. Don was out for lunch, and left, they left a message, and it was something that was urgent. And Don didn't get back from lunch until an hour later. And I would just encourage the residents that if they have an emergency, that's something that's emergent happening at the house, to dial 911. We do not dispatch out of La Habra Heights anymore. LA County dispatches for us. So that's how we get notified and how we get, how we receive our calls. That's one. The other thing that I wanted to bring to the, to your attention, I guess I'll wait for that, for the item 16? I'll bring it up when it, when it comes up. But that's all. If you have any questions?
Questions? Mr. Pespiza?
What's the status on the, the delivery of the new engine?
The delivery of the new engine was slated for October. And Chief Martin and I would like to go out to Wisconsin, I think that's where they're building it, and take a look at it before we ship it out here. But I would be very surprised if we received it by October. But I will get back to you on it. I always think that they make promise, and then there's always delays and other things. So I can get back to you on, a solid date on that.
And then with the number of active wildfires, have we sent anyone to any of the wildfires?
We have been unable to staff due to the qualifications of our captains. They don't meet the minimum standard for, well, we have a couple captains that meet the minimum standard for Cal Fire and the federal, the federal system. But their hours will build up so much that we can't, that they would timeout before the end of the fiscal year. So we, we're being very conservative in that area. We have not sent anyone out.
Any other questions of the chief? Sheriff's Department report?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. We mentioned the grand theft of the wire up in La Habra Heights, especially on Hacienda Road. Thank you. And I forwarded some information over to our detectives regarding these four incidents we had last month, and I think there was a few before, before last month. And Frontier had scheduled to change from copper wire to fiber optics. This kind of crime has, it's not, it's not rampant. It's just, it's been happening here for the last two months only. Somebody was aware that they were going to change this wiring, so they cut the, they'd been cutting the wires without any electricity going through them. So I just found that particularly interesting. I'm not making any allegations. I'm just forwarding this information over to our detectives. We also had one aggravated assault, and that was in the unincorporated area of La Habra Heights. And we had one vandalism that occurred in the golf course on Repasado, I'm sorry, on East Road. And that was, of course, early morning, around 3:00 probably. And they broke the fence and did some damage to the grounds. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions? Moving on to the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull any item? May I have a motion? To approve?
I would move the acceptance of items nine through 14.
Second.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Larity?
Yes.
Engelhardt say yes? Pespiza?
Yes.
And Mr. Zizula?
Yes.
15 protest hearing unpaid brush clearance costs.
Thank you, Mayor. On the side of before you tonight is the cost of recovering brush clearance. So Fire Department has done some abatements recently. And as part of that process, we do allow those property owners the opportunity to come in and, and make several options for them to get to doing the clearance themselves. Even once we do the actual clearance, we have them the opportunity to provide, to pay the invoice for the work that's done. And obviously, last cast, last, worst-case scenario is for us to record a lien. There are five properties that are up for lien tonight. Those ones are attached as attachment to, to the resolution. So the recommendation is for the city council to overrule any protests and adopt Resolution Number 2024-25 for the recording of liens for brush clearance. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions? May I have a motion?
Public hearing.
Oh. Any public comment? No, I don't hear any.
I had a question, though.
Mr. Pespiza, pulling it back to the council?
Yeah, sorry. Hey, Ref, is there a way to, just a question on the, on the, the table here, that's not the, that's Exhibit A. Is there a way to add a column for each of these properties so we can see the total lien on the property? Because I, I know some of these are repeat offenders.
Some of these are repeat.
So can we, can we get another, Angie, sorry to add more, I think it's probably you, just a column that says total lien on the property? I, I just want to make sure that if we're starting to get up into the $100,000 or $150,000 mark, that at some point, we're, we're looking at, especially if they're vacant land, are, is the city getting to a point where we're, we're at, you know, we've exceeded the value of the actual property with, you know, the, whatever liens there are on that property? Because I got to believe most of these are vacant, right?
Not all of them are vacant, but most of them are vacant, yes. We can, we can look into adding the column.
I just want to make sure we don't, we don't get to a point where we expose the city to more costs than we can recover. And I don't know if the city attorney has an opinion on what we can do there. Is there a way to force a sale if we start getting close to the, the value of that property?
Usually, usually the county requires four years before they'll foreclose on something. So there's a time delay, which is a problem. And then it becomes a question of sort of the balance between the amount we'd spend and the fire risk if we don't. So we generally have to wait the four years before we can foreclose on something.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we would stop doing the weed abatement. I just want to make sure that if some of these properties are in the quarter million or half million, I mean, I don't know how many years we've been doing it, but some of them, I seem to recall, every year they're on the, on the list.
That might be a good project. Any other questions? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-25, confirming the report of costs incurred by the city and authorizing assessments as liens to be placed on tax rolls effective September 9, 2024.
Here's Zizula.
I have a second.
Oh. I'd like a second, please.
Do you want a second, or?
He, he gave you a second.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Larity?
Yes.
Engelhardt say yes? Pespiza?
Yes.
And Mr. Zizula?
Yes.
Number 16, support for federal legislation to provide funding to local communities for fire station improvements. I think the chief, is this Mr. Robinson, or the chief, or both?
A little bit of both of them. I'll hand it over to them.
Thank you, Mr. Oldridge. This item has been in process for some time now. As I'm sure everyone's aware, the condition of the apparatus bay that our fire department uses is somewhat less to be desired. It's, it's aging, it's small, and it's not really adequate for the services that we provide here. We were looking for potential federal assistance on this and came across two bills. One called the Fire Station Act, and then the other is a companion House resolution. So we have both a Senate bill and a House bill that are pending. The Senate bill is in the Homeland Security Committee. The, there is no senator in the Western United States that has supported the bill. There are 11 senators that have done so. California has two senators. Only one of those senators is on that committee. And that happens to be Senator Butler, who is, who replaced Senator Feinstein. So she's in that, she's not running for the position. So she's a, kind of a caretaker in that position right now. We've written to her, the mayor's sent a letter to her office urging her to become involved in this, express her support for the bill, and perhaps break loose $7.5 million in funding for a variety of fire departments across the country. The bill would fund a volunteer fire department, and there's also another 25% of the funds that the, would be open competition. So really, 50% of the funds, at least, would be available for an application by La Habra Heights. So that's encouraging. It's a source, and we meet the qualifications. Last week, I had an opportunity to meet with the state director for Senator Butler, and I expressed what our interest was. And she said that she would do several things. She would talk to the senator about sponsoring the bill, becoming a sponsor. She would also look into legislative support that she may be able to engender for the bill. And she would also look to other grant opportunities beyond those two bills. Because she had recently done a legislative search for grants for fire departments, and she said that she would share that information with us. So expect to see, see that information coming in in the next few days. The apparatus bay, as I mentioned, is aging. It's over 30 years old. I'm not sure exactly how old it is. But it's too small for what we do here. And so we can't get all of our equipment in. We leave it out in the elements that requires repainting to keep it, to protect it every few years. That's costly. If this federal funding became available, we would hope to have adequate space for all the emergency service providers, the equipment, the supplies, all of the things that we use day to day. Our fire chief has expressed similar concerns to his staff about the needed improvements. And I'm going to just turn it over to Mitch here for a moment.
Okay, thank you, Tom. So you guys have all walked through the fire station. You've seen the Conex containers that we're using as the, as it has been built out over the years by different fire administrators that have worked here for the city. They've expanded the footprint of the fire station with five Conex containers that are holding different parts of what it takes to run the fire department. So when we talked and did the walks earlier, when I started here, we saw the cracks, we saw, we, we did the course. saw, we did the core sampling, we saw that the foundation was uneven. We're having water rushing through when we have rain. It's uneven and sinking because it's next to the riverbed. And then we have all these extra containers that we're using. So if this legislation were to pass, and it was supported early by the city of La Habra Heights and through your political connections, then the chances of us being recognized and being allocated the funds, up to $7.5 million, to help construct and repair a fire station in select communities across the nation, they even seem to, the way this legislation is being written out, they seem to favor or at least acknowledge volunteer departments throughout the United States. And it would be, if we have our word out there, we have our feather in our cap already, maybe we could be in a position to be allocated some of these funds should the legislation pass. So Tom brought this to my attention. I thought this was a really good way of maybe parlaying off of the Archileta funds that we had that got us the fire engine but couldn't get us the fire station. Perhaps this is a choice that we could all come together in unison and support through your contacts with the supervisor and whoever. My understanding is Adam Schiff, the representative from Burbank, is running for the state senator's position when that comes up for reelection. And he's right here in Southern California, so that might be something that connections could be made with him as well.
In addition, he is one of five California congressmen who support the House version of the bill. And if he moves into the Senate, it stands to reason that he would be supportive of the Senate version.
Congressman Schiff is pretty high-profile also. So it'd be nice to maybe have him helping us.
So tonight, what we're looking for is we're recommending to you a resolution that would be adopted by the City Council, perhaps giving a little more weight to the city's support for this legislation. It may not make it happen, but it's worth a try. We have added two wherethes, if you will, two clauses to the resolution that was in your agenda packet. One talks about the 733 acres of the Puente Hills Habitat Preservation Authority, and that being an urban interface zone, it is susceptible to fires, and that is a potential threat in the community, something we need to be prepared to deal with. And also, we noted that the population in La Habra Heights has a number of residents who are aging, some are infirm, and they look to the Fire Department for special attention and protection if they need it. So with that, we would urge adoption of Resolution 24-26, supporting the passage of Senate Bill 977 and House Resolution Number 1814, authorize the mayor to contact La Habra Heights federal officials requesting support of this important legislation.
And I concur with that.
Any questions? I have just a couple of questions. This is a no-cost item, right? This is just, we'd be writing support letters.
Right. It's basically, if the legislation were to pass as is, it would open up a $750 million pot of money for 100 grants across the nation.
And then I did not hear you, in your presentation, you were saying, I think it was a lady who was going to get back to you, and she, who was that, or what was?
It, her name is Sandra Gonzalez. She is the State Director for Senator LaFonza Butler.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, anyone? Well, it seems like we should give it a try.
Move approval.
Do you need a motion, or just?
I don't know. Do we need a motion for this? I think we.
You need direction, yeah.
I just said move approval, so we can.
Yep, that works.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I'm getting lost. Okay, we just did that already. Okay, number eighteen, updated cost allocation plan and citywide fee for service study. Item eighteen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The sign up before you tonight is a proposal to update our fee and cost allocation study for the city, something that has taken place a few times back in 2010, 2011, went through this process, did it again in 2017, and it's been a little while since we've done that. Generally, the rule of thumb is every three to five years to relook and re-go through your cost for services and your fees from that one. So it's been a little bit over the high end of that part of it. And we reached out to cost revenue specialists who prepared our last fee study for that to get a proposal for them to go through and do a couple of things. It would be a cost allocation analysis, and also just a general fee review, cost for services. As they go through that, it is quite a lengthy process. It does take quite a bit of time to go through that. As they meet with all of the departments, examine all of the fees, look at the time motion that it takes to be able to carry out all these specific projects and/or tasks that we have before us. So this will update it. So the cost for that proposal for them is $24,850, which is actually $1,100 cheaper than it was the last time we did it. So this fee has actually gone down a little bit. And they also have the data from the last time we did it. So as we went through that process, they can refer back to the data from the last course of fee reviews and changes we did and implementation through that process, and update it for our current capacity for that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer and go forward.
Are there any questions of the city manager?
I've got one question. Can we include the, put the Habitat Authority on the brush clearance? We get so much money each year for fire service that, you know, supposedly takes care of their responsibility for that entire habitat area. Can we, in the fee studies, can we include that, where they take a look at that and come up with a number?
Yes, something they could definitely look at. And we had a brief conversation with them related to that topic, something we can include as part of the scope of services.
Sorry, just a clarification, you had a conversation with?
Cost revenue specialists.
Okay.
Had they read the contract with the Habitat Authority? Do you know?
They haven't looked at our agreement or contract for it. What they're going to do is they're going to look at it holistically. They will take that into advantage to consideration, and also, we don't have very many similar other areas, but they will look at those costs of providing services and what it may take and what the cost of providing those services are.
Yeah, I would question why the cost would be any different than any other vacant piece of property in this city. And I know that landowners in this city play significantly more than the Habitat does for the same basic service.
Although, back in the original contract, I don't know, it'll be a lawyer question, but back in the original contract, the city agreed to a certain fee with an escalator clause that we didn't follow up on very promptly, but it's worth looking at. I did ask Mr. Robinson if there was a list of the fees that we would be looking at, and he gave me, this was very last minute.
Yes, I believe if you look on your diocese, it'll be a packet. There is a packet of all of our fees that we.
Where is that?
Should be one of the bits of information that were handed out here right before the meeting, so that's our fees.
Okay, thank you. No, wait. Oh, yeah. So they're going to do all, every one of these?
Yeah, they'll look through all those, and then they also look at just general, how we do things, how we function, who does what, as part of that review.
I did have a public card from Mr. Blackden.
Thank you, Stephen Blackden Citron Road. It's good to do periodic fee studies. Hopefully, some fees will go down due to efficiencies learned during COVID. Maybe some might be eliminated due to not really being needed. Something I've mentioned before, which is a real puzzlement, lien charges for trash, sewer, and weed abatement non-payment. It would seem, though I could be wrong, that the amount of work to submit a lien to LA County is more similar than different for each of these items. It residents are charged from $5 to $1,700. I hope the fee study will look at those. Danger of doing a fee study without also looking at if things could be done more efficiently or less expensively is it institutionalizes any inefficiency. An example, when the city got the permit system around 2007, 17 years ago, we were told it could do online permitting. If we had online permitting, it could make the permit issuance cost close to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Pulling it back to the council, is there any discussion? Suggestions? I have a motion?
Make a motion that we award the, sorry, that we select revenue and cost specialists to perform the city allocation plan and fee study, that we direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary contract, and we authorize city manager to award the contract in an amount of $24,850.
A second.
Mr. Zizula?
Yes.
Mr. Pespiza?
Yes.
Engelhardt say yes, Mr. Larity?
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Number nineteen, fiscal year street improvement project, construction management award.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item was before you last month, related to the cost of doing the street project. So at that meeting, we awarded a construction agreement to Onyx for the actual construction portion of the project. The other part of it is construction management and inspection of the project. At that time, there was a question about the cost of doing that service, and had direction to go back to NV5 and look at their fees and their costs for doing service. Went back and worked with Gerald, our city engineer, their engineering team, and Peter, who's our construction manager. We looked at the last several projects to look at the average time that we were actually doing work, and how many hours we were doing in the field, and construction management to make it as realistic to the cost of what it actually is to provide those services. So it has gone from, the original proposal was $192,364,000. They've reduced that down to $168,159 is the reduction, so a little bit over $24,000 in reduced fees from them sharpening their pencils, going back and looking at what it actually takes, construction hour-wise in the field, construction management time, doing agreements, submittals, tracking change orders, punch list items, getting all the documentation done and completed. And that is their reduced proposal to put it back more in line with what the cost of services are. This proposal is not a guaranteed amount of money, it isn't, that's what the fee is. It's based off time and material, so the faster the project moves and the less problems and issues we run into, the less time we spend in the field doing inspection, the less time we do construction management, and those fees will be a little bit less. My recommendation is for the council to select NV5 to move forward with it. Peter Saldago, who is our construction manager, is an excellent construction manager. He has done a lot of different projects, he's done a lot of projects with us. He is meticulous with his tracking of material submittals and notes in meetings and keeping everybody on point and following up. And so he does an amazing job with that. And the inspectors from NV5 that do the work in the field are top-notch. Mike Elmo, who's proposed to be our primary inspector for that particular road project, has done a project here in the past. He did, when we did RJ Noble, when we did work on Dorothea and Nabal and Cypress over in those areas, he was our inspector for that project, works very well with the community. He works whole with staff, works with the contractor, cognizant of the hours that he's in the field, he's only working if there's work going on that needs to be done. He's also the one that's charged with keeping track of the tonnages that come in, the areas of the grind, the areas of the digouts. So he reviews and approves all of those things. He coordinates that daily with the foreman on the construction company to make sure at the end of the day, we have an accurate amount of material that was ground and material that went back in for the street projects. So it's a very key pivotable role for it. So that's their revised proposal that they came back with us for. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
So is this associated with the work on Hacienda?
Which work on Hacienda?
The road work on Hacienda.
Yes.
So I don't think I can vote on this, right? Even though it's not directly related, or can I vote on this?
You cannot.
Any questions or comments of the remaining council? I know, Mr. Bergman, you were.
Just a comment, I want to thank Rafferty for going back and meeting with NV5 to sharpen the pencil on this. And otherwise, you know, we're looking at doing an RFP for the work. And I know we've got a good team here that you worked with before, and I respect that, that, you know, that they're knowledgeable and all that, and they'll do a good job for us. Thanks for going back and saving us $24,000 out of the thing. So I guess with that, I'll make a motion to award the construction management inspection contract to NV5 in the amount of $168,159, and authorize finance manager to amend fiscal year 2024-25 budget to increase the amount, number 101-45450PWD-6830 by $72,186, and authorize the manager to execute the contracts in the form approved by the city attorney.
A second.
Mr. Zizula?
Yes.
Engelhardt say yes, Mr. Larity?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Number twenty, no, twenty. City manager, city clerk, employment agreement.
Letting Mr. Pespiza out of.
Oh, yeah.
Out of.
So we're to twenty, which is the city manager slash city clerk employment agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll take that one. This pertains to a employment agreement for Mr. Wildridge to be the city manager and the city clerk in the official capacity. The main points of the agreement are as outlined in the staff report, but for the public, the term, it's a three-year agreement from today with automatic one-year extensions unless notice is given not to extend. Salary is $149.680 per year, $650 per year. There are benefits included, as are standard with other city employees. In lieu of receiving a city vehicle, the city manager, because of the need to traverse the city and be on call 24 hours a day, will get a $300 per month automobile stipend and a severance if the employee is dismissed without cause. There is a four-month severance that is granted, which is low among industry standards. Of course, if there's a reason to dismiss for cause, which I'm sure there will never be, the severance does not kick in. So those are the general points of the agreement. I'm available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
If not, then it's just a motion of the council.
Any comments? Any discussion? May I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the employment agreement with Rafferty and Wildridge as the city manager, city clerk for the city of La Habra Heights.
Second.
I just want to say that since, I've only been on the council a couple of years, and I want to congratulate Mr. Wildridge. He's worked really hard, and there's, while nothing's perfect, a lot has been accomplished. Congratulations. Mr. Zizula?
Yes.
Mr. Pespiza?
Yes.
Engelhardt say yes, Mr. Larity?
Yes.
And Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
And I'll just say, I know we voted, but, you know, the citizens of La Habra Heights were incredibly fortunate that Rafferty Wildridge was at the helm during this winter storms. You know, his intimate knowledge of the city and intimate knowledge of how to deal with that. that issue as it pertains to the city was priceless, and allowed us to recover as quickly as we did. So, you know, it's not often that you have someone with that institutional knowledge that's willing to step up and play a leadership role with a little bit of, little bit of risk, moving from, you know, a member of staff to a member of leadership, literally the CEO of the city. So, I appreciate Rafferty for taking that leap, and that leap of faith with us as a council.
And he continues, as he indicated earlier, spending the day with the FEMA people, so.
Terrible way of being indoctrinated, but you got through it, so, good, thank you.
21, gate replacement, large and small horse arenas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item before you is, the riding arenas at the park have seen some damage to the gates, the large riding arena. The gate was knocked off, and we're not able to reattach it, as the condition of it was too poorly. Remaining, what was left of remaining of it, and then one of the smaller arenas, it looks like somebody was really trying to get out of there fast, and put a nice big dent and a kink into that gate, and there's been talk of a horse that was running a little wild, and barged its way through, but those have been damaged and need to be repaired. So we did go out and ask fence companies for quotes. We did receive three quotes, and they ranged from just over $10,000 to just under $6,000 to replace the gates at the large arena and the small arena, which is definitely something, as we had a speaker talk earlier tonight, is definitely a thing that is needed for the safety of the horses that are in the riding arena, and just the people using the park as well. So, the recommendation tonight is for the city council to authorize the finance manager to amend the budget to increase account 101-450, PWD-6610 by $5,975, and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase order, per the purchasing policies, and authorize staff to schedule the work with Wolverine Fence to complete the work as soon as possible.
Any questions?
So I know we're going with low bidder, but given, I think the, what we heard earlier, the criticality and safety-related issues, are we looking at, did we provide a design for those gates to make sure they were built a certain way? And did we consult with some of the horse folks in the city and make sure they were okay with what we're doing? Or are we just replacing like-for-like, or?
We're replacing like-for-like, so, gate, swing gate that will be on the main riding arena will be similar as it is, same with the sliding gate, we'll place like-for-like.
Okay.
Any other questions? May I have a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Laertie?
Yes.
Engelhardt, yes? Pespiza?
Yes.
And Mr.?
What's his name, yes.
Yeah. Okay, number, what are we, 22, project updates and deadlines?
Project updates, these are the ones we look at. For the most part, we're sort of in a similar situation. We anticipated delivery sometime in October, they're working to try to find, as I was saying earlier today, figure out exactly when we may be seeing the fire engine coming in, so we have a hard number for it. And as we did tonight, we'll be making a transition from Republic Services to Ware over the next few weeks. We did meet with our representative from Community Development Block Grant, related to doing the ADA ramp at the park. So one of those big questions became related to doing a design-build project for that, and spending those dollars through that process, where they sometimes require plans and specs to go through their review and approval, before they will give us the okay to move forward with it. After meeting at the park with our representative from CDPG, they were okay with design-build, so we're in the process of drafting that RFP to release it, so we can move forward in a design-build fashion to replace a set of stairs that are, railings that are damaged, and not a very correct stepped height as you come down those stairs, and also include an ADA ramp that will allow for accessible parking spaces in the upper lot down to the main part of the park, and you're right in front of the gym building. So, that will definitely be a well-needed improvement to the park. So it was good to get their blessing to move forward with it, and when we put that RFP together, there's a process to look at that, there's some language that has to be added to it, specific to their federal dollars that we utilize, so we'll make sure to include all of that in their RFP before we release it for the park. Other than that, that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Mr. Pespiza?
So, where did we end up with the, and we can, I just want to make sure this list is comprehensive, so I don't want to add something that's not on the agenda, but where did we end up with the water project that was going on at the park, and the park improvement projects? Are those, did those, did something happen to those, or?
No, we're still in the process with the water improvement portion of the park that we're going to be doing for that one, so I know Tom has spent quite a bit of time with not only the county, but the Star Water Systems representative, to try to answer some of those last questions we had related to funding and the cost for.
I don't want to, because they're not agendaized, I don't want to get, and I mean, make sure we're not going to get into.
It's related to city projects, so you can.
Okay, we're good, all right.
We're good.
Still in the process, and the other park grants that we have, we're looking at sort of how we can expend those monies as fast as possible, which may go towards replacement of trees in the park, and other parking lot improvements around the ADA work we'll be doing.
And, are we okay, wasn't this going to be a design-build, or?
No, I, no, I, the, you mean the ramp thing?
Yeah, back to the ramp.
Well, that's what he said, it's going to be a design, how much, remind me, how much money did we save not having NV5? I think NV5 was going to charge us like 50 grand or something?
Something a little, like around 60 to $1,000 for plans and specs.
Well, thank whatever the company's name is here for taking that on, that's great that we can save that money.
Number, let's see, so, okay, we don't need anything there, I don't think. Okay, next, 23, consideration of contact for grant advocacy services. I don't know whether I, you could start, and.
I was going to hand it over to Mr. Robinson, he can give you a quick little segue, and then we can have the discussion related to this item.
This item was brought to us by the mayor, who expressed interest in seeing what we could do to increase the level of activity we have in terms of grants, and seeking those funding sources for the city. She came to us with a particular, a proposal from a particular company, Townsend Public Affairs. They have done a lot of federal and state and local grants work for public agencies of all sorts, schools, counties, cities, special districts, all sorts of folks, and seem to have done a very good job of bringing that money in. They represent also more than 100 different legislative proposals in recent years, and have seen those through to enactment in law. They're a very capable company, one of the largest serving California public agencies in Washington. They propose to do some grant work, and specifically, there is a revised package, which I believe you have received tonight, that says they would, they're targeting their proposal now on this sheet, to a proposal for the fire station bill that we talked about earlier, but it could be any number of potential grant sources that the council would want to seek. They plan to contact Senator Padilla, Congresswoman Sanchez, the second senator that will be filled at the election time. They wish to work with the various offices while in advance of the deadline for the grant, to prime them for contact, and gain their support, if possible, before the actual grant awards are considered. And, all in all, it's a very professional proposal. It is a $15,000 cost from kind of start to finish, and that's submittal of the application to a decision by the grant agency. Cities would be responsible for the administrative work and the financial work necessary to track and report on the grant. So this is something, I don't know how often this has been done by the city in the past, but it is an interesting proposal. They, I believe, do work for the city of La Habra, to the south of us, and many other cities, as I said, in California. When I met with the senator's contact for California last week, I asked her about this proposal, because it was touching on the same fire station legislation, and it was her opinion that, she was a little surprised, and said, "I'm not sure you need, at your size, you need this type of service to get funding that should be coming to you fairly routinely. There may be other things that you would need to do more than this particular application." My tag to that is, you know, I am a PERS retiree, I only have a certain number of hours that I can be with the city, so if you want to get someone who can be here for a longer term on this particular project, that may be worth doing, and that would be your choice. And with that, I just say I'll answer any questions you might have about this proposal, and maybe ask, did I miss anything?
Well, I was going to say, what happened was, I decided I would, I've invited Justina Garcia here, she's on the emergency preparedness, and I decided a couple of months ago, I would see if we could get a grant committee going, to try to write, to see if we could get grants. And I had heard that La Habra used this company, and so then, I guess Justina and I, I'm not quite clear, we decided we would call them up, and see if they had anything to offer, and what it would cost, and, I don't know if you want to come to the podium. So we had a couple of conversations, and if you look at the documentation, it says Townsend Public Affairs proposal, they've been successful in getting fire stations for several cities here. So it seemed like they had a good track record, and they sounded very positive. So, it wasn't that I started out looking to hire this company, it was just generally to get a grant program going in the city, and sort of backed into this, and then when we had the conversation, and so, I know Justina knows a lot more about grants than I do, so that's why I invited her to say what she thought about this.
Sure, so, maybe not a lot, but, I'm Justina Garcia, and I'm part of the Emergency Planning Committee here with the city of La Habra Heights, and one of the things that I started to do on the committee is look for grant opportunities, and met with Mayor Engelhardt, and discussed what the most priority items would be. We talked about the need for a fire bay, for the apparatus here. I think we're all very proud of our fire department and the work that they do, and this is a deserving item to have on, as a priority item for funding. I think that we've done some work researching potential grants, we have found wonderful people in the community who say they can help, but we are all volunteers, and I, you know, you're very generous in saying I know a lot more, this is not exactly what I do for a living, I just happen to work, you know, for an organization that provides grants, so, trying to find resources, and looking at what we need here in our city, at the fact that this is something important, something we want to bring about, and it is, it can be, a million-dollar cost, I think is what was estimated. The research that Mayor Engelhardt did with the city of La Habra was to understand how other cities are securing grant funds for this type of work. So, Townsend Public Affairs came up, their proposal is $15,000, as, as, you just heard, it is to submit at least three different applications or proposals on our behalf, but it also involves doing the pre-meetings to ensure that there's awareness of who we are, what we need, and that there is, of course, the submittal of the applications, and then follow-up. It's a big dollar amount, so I thought that vying for that with volunteers can take a long time as we go through the learning process. This is not a guarantee, we don't pay the agency $15,000 and get a guarantee of $1 million, but I think it's a much surer shot than the, you know, we appreciate the trust in the volunteer group, and folks are very willing to do it, but I think for something like this, and it's an important item, and it's a big price tag, it's an option for consideration, that we can work with an organization like Townsend, and hopefully be successful in the '25, '26 federal earmarks appropriations funding.
You know, if you look down, this was a, you typed up the document called Townsend Public Affairs Proposal?
I did, yes, it's a summary, we went back and forth, a lot of emails with Townsend to better understand the proposal, so I thought it might be easier, instead of having everyone read through a long chain of emails, to simply give you a summary. I mean, it was just, it was just shared, it is, it's going to support the city in securing funding through the federal earmarks, in three separate requests, to Senator Alex Padilla, Congresswoman Linda Sanchez, and then, of course, to the second senator following the November 2024 election. It's for the one project, three different ways. I think they're also offering to do just broader research on grant funding that's available, maybe for other needs that the city may have, and their proposal lists working with the offices in advance of the deadline to inform them of our priorities, and then, of course, preparing and submitting the packets, and then advocating for the project as registered federal lobbyists before, during, and after the submittal. So there's an investment of time, of course, and knowledge on how to write the grants, what to put in the grants, how to make sure that the grants represent the types of projects that are being funded, and I think that's where we could learn a lot, also this volunteer group, from Townsend Public Affairs, so that we can continue to do this and be successful for the city.
My interest is in getting an apparatus bay, and it would be nice if the funds that Mr. Robinson is looking at, those are tied up in committee, I mean, they haven't even gotten out of committee yet, and they may never get out of committee. So, this is just to consider, but it's, if you look, it seems like, when we had the conversation with the representative, he was very positive, and listed these other fire stations, so, it seems to me, A, while Mr. Robinson is obviously pursuing what sounds really good, it's still stuck in committee, and if it gets out of committee, then we might not get that, and who's going to write that grant? So, that's my thought, is maybe this is worth giving it a try. Mr. Laertie?
Yep, Mr. Robinson, you mentioned that you talked to these folks, and they had, I may be misstating this, but it sounded like reservation about a small city doing this? Could you expand on that, please?
Yes, when I was speaking with her, she indicated that she had three items that would be of interest to us. One would be a run, a special run that their office does for any inquiry coming in about grants, and it's basically, these are the grants the federal government has available that you may be interested in, okay? And maybe you're not interested in them, but they're still available, so we want you to know. Second thing she had was a run that she had done of that same database, but specifically for a fire station in another area of California. So she said she would send us that. Third one was, if you're familiar with the small, the community project grants that the various members of Congress can award to their communities for $1 to $3 million typically, that's one level of funding. There's then a appropriations bill that would include a specific line item for the city of La Habra Heights. The votes for both of those have left for this year. She said there's a third package of funding, and she said she would send that information to me also. I can't describe it, because I was not familiar with it, but she said she would send it to me, and when I see those three. She said she would send it to me and when I see those three, two items of which I'm already familiar with and look at the third, which she said would be more beneficial to our cause and that I can answer your question more directly. But what she was saying specifically about the use of this type of lobbyist firm to obtain funding for a relatively small city looking for a grant that should be available to us because it's written to include volunteer fire departments and so forth, it's not like you have to go out and find a cause or find a funding source that you can fit into. This one's right for us. Mayor is absolutely right, though, it is stuck in committee and that's why I've talked about getting the Senator Butler to endorse it since she's on the committee, but apparently hasn't taken a position. We made that clear to her in a letter to her and to her staff in conversations. Now I've got to the right staff person and had a face-to-face conversation with her about it and she was very pleased and gave me her personal cell number. So I think we got through in that conversation. So, but that's exactly what they want to do with this firm, okay? We're just a little ahead of them on that particular bill. That's why I said, if you want to go for another bill for another purpose, that may be perfect. On the other hand, if you want to turn this over to them, that's your prerogative.
You mentioned that she had applied for a grant for a fire department somewhere else in the state.
She provided them information on grant funding sources for a fire station, so basically a full report.
And how did that, how did that fly?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Jim, one last question. I'm asking, what is the $7,500 figure based on? And I ask that from the standpoint that, let's say, next year we would want to use the same company for another grant of some sort for something. Is it 7,500 a shot or is it based on some other factor?
My understanding is that the charge that this company has proposed is $15,000 and it's half upfront and half, I believe, I'd have to check the language they use, but they are proposing to make three contacts to three offices, the two senators and the Congresswoman. Okay, we know those people, except for the vacant position at this point. And they're going to do basically three separate advocacy-type things. They're going to contact the office, they're going to prepare and submit request packets and they're going to advocate for the project as registered federal lobbyists. You are all elected officials. You can speak to your brethren in any subject you want to advance. So, and I think you have more credibility walking in the door typically than a lobbyist because you're elected to represent the people of your community.
Okay.
But it's door number one or door number two?
Thank you.
Do we know when we'll know whether this bill ever gets out of committee?
I suspect the bill, it's a two-year bill, it's coming up on the end of the legislative session and if it hasn't passed pretty quick, it's not going to pass and there's an election going on. So I think it's, prospects are dim in this legislative session, which would imply that it's going to come back the next time around.
We don't have to, we could wait and see. It's just a question of whether we want to move forward at this point.
And, you know, we have this proposal, which is an option to consider. We could also put together a plan with, you know, your knowledge. I'm sure that the council here, we said we need you to go speak to this particular office and support, you know, this particular proposal. You'd be happy to do it, but we need, we need a strategy. What are the grants we're going to go after? Where are the dollars that are available? How do we go after those grants? When are the applications due? When is our best bet to do the pre-work, to have those meetings, then submit those applications and do the follow-up? And who's going to go speak to whom? Because, I mean, I think it's great that we have these opportunities, so we need to act on them and if we decide we don't want to pay someone else to do that work, then we just need a better plan to figure out how to do it ourselves, right? So I would just propose that we can, we can look at both alternatives side by side. I don't know which would pay bigger dividends. I just know that folks are busy and if we've gone this long without an apparatus bay, then it's for a reason. So I, you know, just want to make sure that we don't lose the opportunity in the upcoming federal earmarks cycle to bring some of that grant money here to the city and take care of these projects that we need.
Yeah, I have gone to a couple of meetings at Sanchez's. She holds them for various cities and they're very well-attended by mayors and I don't get the impression that it's going to be easy to get a million dollars from Sanchez's earmarks. So her grants, I think, are smaller, but I think she does want to give our city something, but not, not this perspective or not this amount.
Madam Mayor, it may be appropriate, and not trying to put this off, but it may be appropriate to have staff bring you a report at your next meeting based on the information that comes from this Senate office, grants generally that are available, fire grants that are available and whatever other funding levels they recommend that we consider.
Well, if we know that in a month, that would be fine.
Yeah, absolutely.
So why don't we just table this a month then? That's, I want to get us an apparatus bay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for coming down. Okay, 24, any individual council member information items or attendance reports? Any public comments not on the agenda? We're adjourned.